I'll call the November meeting of the Ridgefield Planning Commission to order. If everyone could please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could proceed to the roll call.
All right, Commissioner Glavine.
Present.
Commissioner Burkhart.
Present.
Commissioner Flynn.
Present.
Commissioner Butler. Chair Tyler.
Present.
Commissioner Wolf.
Present.
Thank you. And if we could have a motion to excuse Commissioner Butler?
Sumoed.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we can proceed to the oath of office for our new vice chair. And Ms. Lust, are there any late changes to the agenda?
There are no late changes. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will now move into our first public comment period. Anyone requesting to speak to the commission may request to speak at this time. If you have not provided notice in advance to speak during the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature if you're on the Zoom. The clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone so you're able to make your comments. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to mute and unmute. Is there anybody wishing to make a public comment at this time? Anyone on Zoom or on the phone? Not seeing anybody, we will close the first public comment period. Now move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? And if so, if there's a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now move on to the public hearing period. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lust.
Thank you, Chair Tyler. Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. This evening, we have a presentation, discussion, and public hearing on round three code updates. This batch is largely focused on the sign code, RDC 18710. And then there's one item in there, not about signs. It's another impact fee item. We'll talk through it, but the more you look, the more you find. So we put that one in here, too. So I'll go ahead and start, as we've done before, going through line by line on the items here. It's a shorter list than the past couple of meetings. I'll pause after each and offer commissioners the chance to ask questions, make comments, and then we will move into the public hearing. So the table is on your screen and packet page eight. The actual proposed underlined straight-through text amendments follow. They're there if we need them, but I'm just going to go through the table. So the majority of these are about signs. So starting with line one here is the proposal is to add an exemption for historic markers. So like historic markers for buildings or other sites would be exempt from getting sign permits. Any thoughts or questions on that one?
Yes, Ms. Lust, can you expand on what historic would mean? Or what type of historic marker would not be approved?
Good question as to what would not be approved. The kind of thing that would be approved is what, for example, what you've seen go up on the City Hall building and other historic buildings downtown with old photographs identifying the site, describing the history. As to what would not be approved, I, that's a good question. Is if there's anything that is a type of historic marker you would be concerned about getting approved, I would take that into consideration.
I don't have any example of anything. I'm just concerned that, like referencing the date a building was built or, you know, the old high school, that kind of stuff, I think is perfectly acceptable. I just don't know if someone would want to put up a historical marker of something bad. And I don't even know if there was anything bad that would be, you know, wanted to have a sign on it or whatnot. But I just don't know where we would draw the line if it's necessary or if there should be some catch-all language to allow the city to reject something that is deemed in some way to be not reasonable for the public good.
Yeah, I can look into what kind of parameters would be appropriate. I believe there is some language generally in the sign code that excludes offensive material. So perhaps that could be a starting point, but we'll look into it.
I'm not sure there's a historic location where like an important F-bomb was dropped. So I'm not, I just, I think we should have some sort of line that can be drawn.
And adding on to that a bit, I guess my thought is, what if you had a glowing neon home of U-Haul sign? And maybe just having director approval of a review and sign-off might be sufficient.
Is there, is there a body that would review? Is there a body that would review the historic, stuff like a historical review commission or?
Ridgefield doesn't have like a historic commission.
So one of my concerns in the, in the world of content neutrality, post Reed v. Gilbert, is trying to classify the content of a sign differently than other signs. I think that you have the opportunity to classify historic signs if they're directed through some sort of official capacity. So if maybe it is through like an organization like Main Street or something like that, where they have the opportunity to have research backed up on that, and it's through an official capacity, you can then regulate that through that means.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, go ahead and move on to the next items here. So the next two items relate to cabinet signs. The existing code has a prohibition on backlit cabinet signs, but does not define what a cabinet sign is. Last October, we issued an interpretation that, based in code language and vetted by our city attorney, that a cabinet sign could be defined as a sign which may be single or multi-sided, incorporated a rigid frame, which support and retains removable sign face panels constructed of acrylic, plexiglass, plastic, or similar materials. And another part of that interpretation was that, based on other existing sign code language around illumination, the city would allow cabinet signs where text, symbols, and/or logos are illuminated, but the background is opaque. So that is, that is the standard we have been functioning under this year. The proposal is to codify that, as is the goal of any director's interpretation, is to eventually come to a solution that is code, so that can be set aside.
So is the intent just to essentially not allow the old-school can signs that are 100% a sheet of plexiglass and functionally basically have the letter show through, either through indirect lighting behind the plexiglass letters or some sort of halo illuminated letters from behind the opaque letters?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay. The next item relates to accessory signs. This is a defined, defined sign type in the sign code. Current code has a maximum allowance of four accessory signs on a site. The proposal is to allow an excess of four if those signs are necessary for safe user circulation on a site. We're typically seeing a need for this in sites with drive-through uses, where you have like a specific flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic that kind of needs to be coordinated for safety. And yeah, are looking to add, just add a little flexibility there for situations where another accessory sign might help the site work better. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Can you clarify when safe user circulation would necessitate more than four signs? I'm just a little unsure what the criteria is. And maybe it doesn't matter because maybe it's a situation where the developer is working in tandem with the city, and so there's not a whole lot of disagreement about this type of thing. And that's okay. I think if that's the answer, probably.
Yeah, I think the vision for how this would be implemented is, you know, the, the standard's four. If someone wants to go above four, they have to ask for it and, and show like, hey, on our specific site, we need an additional directional sign, an additional sign indicating where the exit is, something like that.
So if they don't ask, then there wouldn't be a chance for a fifth or sixth sign for safety? Or would the city go to the developer and say, we think that there needs to be another sign here?
There could certainly be a conversation in that direction, too. But the, how the standard would be written is, that the maximum number of accessory signs on a site is four, unless the applicant demonstrates need for more. But certainly, I mean, that's, that's sort of the, the function of the code is that it's, you know, up to the applicant to, to show that they need something above and beyond. What is the minimum requirement? Or maximum requirement in this case. But I mean, we do, we talk with applicants over the course of the project. And if, say, our planner or engineer, you know, observed what could be potentially a safety issue on a site plan, that is not something they would ignore. And if it could be solved by additional signage, we could request it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I have kind of a two-part question. Who, I guess, is making this decision? It seems like it's a discretionary decision on the city's part as to determine whether they've, whether there's this requirement for safe user circulation. I guess, who, is that you making that decision every time, as the director? And have, has, have you looked into the situations where if, if you make a decision that they don't meet that, so you deny and say they only can have four signs, and then there is, somebody gets hurt later? Would, could that expose the city to some kind of liability since they've made this discretionary safety decision now?
Well, that's a, a good question, that contingency. Have to ask our, our city attorney if like, what, what risk this would expose the city to. As to who is reviewing the proposal, would be planners and engineers. Ultimately, it's my signature as director on a land use decision.
Thank you.
Okay. The next three items, the last three signed items are all in the section pertaining to freestanding signs. Might also describe them as monument signs. So we have an existing requirement for freestanding signs to have a sign base that's at least 40% the width of the sign itself. What we are proposing to add is a requirement for that sign base to be earth toned and prohibiting wraps on sign bases. Like if it's going to be a sign base that looks like stone, it needs to be, you know, three-dimensional material and not a two-dimensional layer that mimics that. Okay.
I just, when, when you use the term rendered, that's how, that's how you're using it. Like it actually manifests, you're not actually asking for somebody to come in and present renderings of some sign.
No.
Okay.
Yes, created, manifested in such a manner. Yeah.
I have a question about definitions. Is, is wraps, how those types of products would be described? Or is that, is that sort of, is there a, is that what they're called?
That's how I would describe it. That's how I've heard them described.
If you were a developer and you were trying to figure out what, what was required, and you saw the word wraps, would you understand what that means?
I can't speak for someone I am not, but I believe so.
Okay.
That is certainly a question we can ask of our folks we work with, with sign companies, who have been, who have received this packet as well for comment.
And then second definition, what's an earth tone?
We have another code section that provides a list of earth tones, stones, sands, light grays, sage greens, bricks, et cetera. I believe are the, the examples given.
I'll take your word for it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that item? Okay. The next item pertains to freestanding signs in residential zones. Not a super common application, but we do see subdivisions come in for a monument sign for their entry. Currently, there's no dimensional standards for monument signs in a residential zone. So far, you know, we haven't seen anything proposed that is outlandish in any way. I think as you drive around town, you see, you know, good examples of appropriate monument signs for residential subdivisions. But the proposal is to add as a, as a backstop, dimensional requirements for monument signs in residential zones. They'd be the same dimensions as for monument signs in neighborhood business and mixed-use zones.
Yeah, may I? That, I, I would, I completely agree with dimensional standards. I think they're great. If, if there could be a provision that would allow for some sort of discretionary review on things that are like full entry gateways. Sometimes when you get larger subdivisions, they want to create something that's bigger than just a sign. It's like, you know, full multi-tiered entry gateways. And I've built them in the past, and sometimes the dimensional standards would consider the structure on which they're mounted a sign, even though it's like, has no sign on it, and it's like an archway or something like that, that you walk through. And that'd be something to consider in terms of that. It's a nice entry feature to a neighborhood and would hate for it to be limited based on a definition of what is considered a freestanding sign.
Certainly, yeah.
So we've dealt recently with a lot of residential mixed-use overlays. So we have, if I understand it right, we've dealt with three, I think, this year. One on Royal, well, two, I guess, on Royal, one kind of to the south, one to the north of Pioneer. And now, last meeting, we, was it just last meeting? The one on the other side of the highway. So under this standard, I guess, how would this, how would those areas now? Because like, for instance, the one at Pioneer and Royal is going to have quite a bit of commercial. So are they going to be limited to this sign that we see typically in front of HOAs now?
So the proposal isn't to change the regulations for RMUO. But I do think, based on your comment, it would be a good idea for us to look at what it currently says for RMUO and if that's appropriate for the commercial component of a mixed-use site.
Am I, I guess, am I missing that in this D1C?
I'll have to look at that and, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I think I'm missing my last page.
Oh.
I can't see the code you're referencing.
Gotcha.
Well, I can.
It seems to say to me that, it says signs in the commercial CNB zone, the employment zone, and then the residential zones and properties with the Ridgefield mixed-use overlay would have these limits.
Yes. The proposal is to, the limits already exist for commercial neighborhood business and residential mixed-use overlay.
Okay.
So the proposal is to apply the same limits to the residential zones.
Okay. So this wouldn't actually change anything for the?
It would not.
Okay, gotcha. So, so right now, they're already restricted to these kind of 12-foot-high signs. But I guess, like you said, with that.
I need to look into that, yeah.
That might not make sense for the commercial side of the, okay. Thank you.
Okay. The final item under signs relates to signs adjacent to Interstate 5. There are some height and area bonuses in the existing codes for freeway signs. So the proposal is to require monument signs, including signs with a pole, adjacent to Interstate 5, to have an earth toned sign base that's at least 25% of the height. The example that we modeled this after is the In-N-Out Burger pole sign. They have a earth toned, sort of brick or stone appearance, sign base that is 29% of the pole height, which is something our, our staff worked with them on to, to come up with a visually appealing design for, you know, the, the poles for people driving down the freeway, the bases for people who are on the site. Any questions on that one or comments?
I prefer no pole signs, but this, I think, gets us to a good compromise, in my opinion. And I'm okay with that.
All right. The last item on the list here, not about signs, it is about impact fees. The last two rounds that we've, we've discussed of code amendments have included provisions to create opportunities for, particularly for small businesses to like pay traffic impact fees by payment plan, petition counsel for reductions in traffic impact fees. And in digging through that code and working on those items, we identified a section where some language didn't quite match our longstanding practice of when to calculate and collect impact fees. So the proposal is to amend the code to reflect our practice of calculating impact fees at the time of building permits submittal and collecting impact fees at the time of final building inspection for residential and building permit issuance for non-residential, with an option to defer non-residential traffic impact fees to final building inspections. We vetted this with the city attorney and our finance department. And they've reviewed and, okay, the, the language that was before you this evening.
I just want to give you a big compliment on this. This is huge from a housing affordability standpoint. Delaying impact fees, especially with larger subdivisions, really helps reduce the carry cost associated with said fees. So kudos. This is great.
Any other thoughts or comments on the impact fee item? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it back to you, Chair Tyler, for any further discussion and then our public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or discuss items they'd like to discuss before we do the public hearing on this item? Not seeing anything. I think we'll go into the public hearing and then come back and see if there's any questions or comments at that time. So is now time for public hearing on this specific issue or item of business. If you have signed up with the clerk prior to the meeting to address the planning commission, your name will be called and the clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone or come forward to the podium to make your comments. If you have not provided notice in advance to speak during the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature if you wish to make a comment if you're on Zoom. The clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone so you're able to make your comments. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to mute and unmute. Please state your name and limit comments to three minutes. Note, there will be no back and forth interaction between the speaker and the planning commission. Did anyone sign up in advance? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody who is wishing to make a comment now during this public hearing period? Anyone online or on the phone or on Zoom? Not seeing anybody. We'll close the public hearing on this item. Any other final comments or questions from the commissioners? Otherwise, entertain motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve as drafted with consideration for planning commission comments. Recommend approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will now turn, now go to our second public comment period of the evening. So now it's time for public comment. Anyone requesting to speak to the commission may do so at this time. If you have not provided notice in advance to speak during the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature if you're on Zoom, and the clerk will send you permission to unmute your microphone. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to mute and unmute. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment during this public comment period? Not seeing anybody. We will close this public comment period. I'll turn the time back to Ms. Lust, Lust for staff reports.
Thank you very much, Chair Tyler. Couple items for you this evening. The first is that tomorrow's council meeting- The first is that tomorrow's council meeting, they will be reviewing the proposed commercial development code updates that council previously reviewed and also previously went to a hearing at, sorry, planning commission previously reviewed, also previously went to a hearing at city council. So their opportunity to take action on those is tomorrow evening if anyone's interested in being here, being online for that. And I forgot my second item, so that is all I have for you. Oh, no, it came back to me. The obvious one, we have a good pool of applications in for planning commission. I believe we have 12, so they're under review right now and, yeah, looking good. That is all I have, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. We'll now go to reports from commissioners. I think we'll start at this end, this week, maybe this month.
Well, just wanted to thank everyone for your generosity and time and, and this is my last planning commission meeting, and so I wanted to make sure to thank the staff and, and my fellow commissioners for your help and, and support, and I've certainly enjoyed my brief period here, but I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Borchardt?
No updates on my end.
Thank you, Commissioner Flynn.
I'd like to say thanks to my fellow commissioners for putting their faith in me to be the vice And maybe the weather had something to do with this, but Halloween was pretty safe, I feel. I was out and about and I didn't see anything too dangerous, and so that was a relief. Lots of police officers everywhere, which I always appreciate regardless of Halloween or not. And thank you to the staff and thank you to the member of the public who's here. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin.
Just want to say thank you for all you've done for the planning commission, Commissioner Wolf, and excited to see you go. That's it.
Thank you, yeah, I want to echo that as well. Thank you, it's been a pleasure to work with you and wish you the best on your future endeavors. Exciting adventure, it sounds like, ahead of you, so as always, big thank you to Ms. Lust and Miss Seaver for being here and for all the help they provide, particularly with my cheat sheets that I get every month, I really appreciate that. I'm very excited to have Commissioner Flynn as the vice chair. He has whispered in my ear quite a bit, been helpful, so that's more an official capacity of whispering my ear to help, so I appreciate that and his willingness to accept. One thing I forgot to mention last time that I wanted to mention, but I wanted to give a shout-out to, I always say his last name wrong, Ryan Thamert. Did I say that right? The Director of Public Works?
Ryan Thamert, yeah.
Thamert, thank you. I reached out to him a couple months ago and about a month and a half ago, he agreed to just meet with me to discuss some items within his purview and he spent almost two hours with me, well past five, to just kind of walk through how the stormwater systems work and how sidewalks work and very helpful. He said he would happily spend more and more time with me as needed, but I, I just really appreciated him taking some time to explain something that, not necessarily within our purview, but kind of adjacent to it and, and gets addressed often, so I'd recommend, and I'm sure other directors would be equally open and available to discussing kind of their roles and their areas of purview. And so I encourage the commissioners to reach out to Mr. Thamert or other directors if they're interested and, and it was really helpful, very informative, and I really appreciated it, so. Other than that, I have no other items, so I think we can adjourn at this time. Thank you.